Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, September 9th. We're going to go right into executive session. Can I have a motion for that, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen being 6:45 enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically police chief contract, fire chief contract, and to review and approve executive session minutes from July 22nd, August 5th, and August 19th. And we will return to regular session at the conclusion of executive session.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ball call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. We'll be back in about 15 minutes. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, September 9th. I'll read our regular agenda. At 7:00 PM, citizens input topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair 48 hours in advance of the meeting. 7:05 Selectmen's Update. 7:10 Mary Beth Bernard, new assistant town manager. 7:20 Sharon Wasson, town planner, to talk about RFP on town-owned properties. At 7:30, we'll have a discussion about an RFP for town council. 7:40, we'll have discussion for a call for special town meeting. 7:50, the Board will discuss proposed warrant article for special legislation liquor licenses. At 8 o'clock, we'll have the Town Hall Working Group. David Feldman will provide us with an update on the Town Hall project. And at 8:10, Bill Keegan will provide us with the town manager update. John, can you do the ...
Sure.
Let's have allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So, our first item is citizens input. Bob, can you come forward? Bob's going to talk to us about the upcoming POW MIA vigil.
Thank you, Lorraine. As Lorraine said, this is Bob, I'm Bob Saitman. I'm from 30 Taylor Road. I am the chairman of Foxborough's Veteran Services Advisory Committee. And this, on September 19th and 20th, is the Fourth Annual Foxborough POW MIA Remembrance Day. The third Friday of every month of every year is, on September, is POW MIA Remembrance Day. We commemorate it here in Foxborough over two days. It starts at Friday at 4 o'clock as a 24-hour vigil standing, vigil of what's called the Missing Man Table. And a Missing Man Table is something that's in every military eating establishment worldwide, and it's a table set with a empty place that is there as a remembrance to those that cannot be there to eat because they are either missing or POW. And that is in every military eating establishment worldwide. So, we set up a Mark I, and we have a 24-hour vigil around that. That vigil, we usually have it in two to three, four-person, you know, shifts. It starts at 4 o'clock Friday night. It is open to milit, active military, veterans, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and this year, we're opening up to just general citizens. If, it starts Friday at 4 and ends Saturday at 4. If anyone is interested, I believe they're supposed to have a number up underneath my picture on the TV to be able to call if you're interested in signing up for one of the shifts to be on the vigil. When the vigil ends, we have the ceremony at Saturday at 4 o'clock at the bandstand on the Common. We have a guest speaker. We have someone read the Missing Man Table narration, which talks about each of the items on the Missing Man Table and what the significance of each one of them is. We end, end the night with echo taps and a quick prayer for those that are still missing. And just so you know, we still have over 38,000 missing men and women from all of the wars, from Civil War to current. We still actively looking. There is a unit of, a joint service unit that travels around the world looking for remains. I don't know how many of you remember that about two years ago, we interred the remains of a Foxborough man at Rock Hill Cemetery from the Korean War that had been missing for over 60 years. And his remains had just been identified and was interred at Rock Hill Cemetery. So, I would invite everybody to come. Please attend the, attend the ceremony if you would so like. Please sign up for one of the shifts at the vigil. It's not a formal vigil. It's just a matter of having people just standing around at the table to just honor, you know, honor those, honor the memory of that table. So, and this also is a formal invitation to the members of the Board of Selectmen and the town managers to attend. And I was hoping that someone from the Board of Selectmen could just make some welcoming remarks to the citizens in welcoming them to the event.
Sure.
And I'll leave that up to you, to Lorraine, to, you know, if you could let me know who would be doing that.
Thank you very much for the invitation. We'll definitely do our best to be there, and I'd be happy to make some remarks.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, and have a good night.
Very good. Are there any other citizens here for input? No? All right. Just going to give a brief update, a couple more announcements. This Saturday, September 13th, from 11:30 to 3:30 is McGinty Fund Day. I spoke with Chris Mitchell a little earlier, and he said it's going to be a great time, a lot more forms of entertainment coming forward. So, there'll be family entertainment, food, and something for everybody to do. So, wanted to invite everyone in town to attend that. Also, just a general announcement, tomorrow night at the McGinty Room, we are having a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen with the Advisory Committee and Planning Board and the town, the signed bylaw review committee. We're going to be reviewing suggested changes to our existing general bylaw, so just wanted to put that out there. That starts at 7 o'clock tomorrow night for all the crowds who would like to attend that. All right? And lastly, just want to mention again for everyone on Thursday, September 11th, to take a moment and reflect on our country and all of those who protect us and serve us. So, and that's it for Selectmen's Update, mine. Any other items? Nope? Okay. Okay. So, 7:10, Mary Beth Bernard.
Just one item, Madam Chair, relative to the items not reasonably anticipated on your agenda, dealing with the Splitsville matter.
Okay.
Do you want to take that up?
Yes.
You have before you tonight a request for, from Splitsville Lanes in Hollister Moon, a request to, to open at 11:00 AM on, for the Patriot Day game, Patriot Games, game days, so before, obviously before 12 o'clock. Licenses normally from 12 o'clock on. They requested that they be open at 11:00 to, for the brunch, open, brunch opening for Patriot Day Games, Patriot Games.
These are for the games that are scheduled to start at 1:00 PM, correct?
Yes. 1:00 starts.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the request for Splitsville to open at 11:00 AM on the Sunday, home games for the Patriots.
That's starting at 1:00?
Start at 1:00.
Right.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dan. You're welcome to stay if you want.
I'm supposed to work tonight.
Oh, you can stay.
I do like to work.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dan. All right.
So, Mary Beth?
You want to just come up? You know, just, you can have a seat at the table there. I think Bob still kept it warm for you, so. All right. So, Madam Chair, members of the Board, I am pleased to introduce to you this evening the newest member of our management team, Mary, Ms. Mary Beth Bernard, will be assuming the role of assistant town manager on October 6th of this year. Ms. Bernard was, was the successful candidate in the recruitment process that spanned the months of July and August. She was among 100-plus candidates who applied for this position. The recruitment process involved telephone interviews of 23 candidates, personal interviews with 14 candidates by a panel of subject matter experts, which included town manager and assistant town managers from surrounding communities. List of 14 semifinalists was then narrowed to four finalists who were interviewed by a second panel of local officials who were able to help me determine the best fit for this organization. This is truly one of the most difficult part of the recruitment process because, quite honestly, any one of the four finalists could have, could have been offered this position and the town would have been very well served. However, after considering some of the greatest needs of our organization, I was compelled to select Mary Beth. Ms. Bernard has been the human resource director for the town of Westwood for almost 11 years. She has performed many other duties outside the realm of personnel management for the town, including service on several building committees and other special topic studies, including health insurance, and health insurance reform and addressing the town's OPEB liability. She's a member of the town, town of Westwood's executive leadership team. Mary Beth is extremely well-versed in all aspects of human resource management, including pay and compensation, collective bargaining, labor relations, training and education, and recruitment and retention. Mary Beth serves as a member of the Board of Directors and Steering Committee for the West suburban health group and is a member of the Executive Committee of the Massachusetts Municipal Personnel Association. She is one of only five senior professionals in human resources in all of the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and recently completed the Suffolk University Municipal Leadership Program with highest honors. She holds a bachelor's, bachelor's of science degree from UMass Boston in public service with a minor in psychology. Prior to her work in Westwood, Mary Beth was the manager of corporate programs at Babson College, where she managed the corporate executive, executive education program. Prior to that employment, she was the personnel manager for Calvert Department Stores. Madam Chair, members of the Board of, Board of Selectmen, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you tonight, this evening, the newest member, the new assistant town manager for the town of Foxborough, Ms. Mary Beth Bernard.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm thrilled to be here.
All right. So, Board members have questions or would like to talk to Mary Beth about her background? Feel free.
I'll cite, I mean, the education, the certifications, the affiliations, and, you know, the recommendation from our town manager, very impressive.
Oh, thank you.
Short and sweet. I wish you luck. There's a lot to do.
Thank you.
And it's, I'm hoping it's going to be a very positive experience, and I wish you luck.
It's been a wonderful experience so far. I came by that Friday and met some of the Town Hall staff, and just from everything that I've learned, all the reading and research I've done, there's so much great stuff to work with. I'm passionate about the HR piece and looking forward to getting involved in some of the other stuff, too.
Yeah, that's, that was my comment. I'm glad that you're heavy in HR. We've, we've had some issues over the years, and I think it's, it needs someone's hand on the rudder to, to get some of the issues addressed, so I'm looking forward to it. You starting when?
October 6th. But I'm bouncing in and out quite a bit. I'm going to be at the department head meeting on Thursday and taking a day off to attend the health fair so that I can, you know, meet with, see what the, what that entails, what the benefits, and that'll be a good way to get to know some of the employees as well.
There's no lack of work.
I know. It's a good challenge, though.
We've already reserved a seat for you at the table right there. So, we have the mic set up for you and everything. I just want to say, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thrilled to have you. So impressed with your resume, and Bill has just spoken so highly of you. Everyone involved in the process spoke so highly of you, so really, we're looking forward to working with you and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah. Welcome. Very impressive resume. From an outsider, what do you think of our Town Hall?
Well, our Town Hall in Westwood is not much better, so.
It's an old building, too.
I think, you know, I definitely see some potential there, and.
It was a loaded question.
Yeah. I definitely think you need a new one.
I actually joked about this earlier, but we, I did all the interviews over at the library. I didn't want to. Thought I'd spring the, the building at the end. Some of what they did to me when I started here, too.
I was going to say the same thing.
I want to welcome you, Mary Beth, to the town of Foxborough. It's a wonderful town. You're going to find it's a wonderful town. We have great town employees. The reason we hired Bill Keegan as our town manager is because we felt that he could bring a team together to help run the town successfully. And we're thrilled that you are here, that you're a member of the team, and you are going to feel very comfortable in this town because it's a very welcoming town.
Thank you.
And best of luck, and, and thank you for taking the job.
Thanks so much. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm thrilled. It's like, I feel like, you know, from the beginning, it was a perfect fit. I really did.
Let me just say a couple things that Mary Beth, I've known Mary Beth professionally for a few years because we served on the, on the West suburban health board together as members of the Board of Directors. But beyond that, I actually, when I was in Dedham, I actually asked her to serve, I remember my panel, to select my HR director, which I actually learned a lot more about her during that process because we ended up with a great candidate. It was, it was really, really helpful to, for me, and she was very helpful to me in that process. But I, you know, I've also talked with several of her colleagues around the state. Certainly talked to a lot of her references, of course, in the process, but to a person, they all spoke very, very highly about Mary Beth, and, and that they said if there was a, if there is a better HR director in the state or a person who knows HR better than Mary Beth, and we haven't met them yet because she really does know that business. And more important, she actually likes to do collective bargaining. I haven't met too many people who like doing collective bargaining, but she actually does, she does like it, so. All the more reason for me to look in that direction for her in that regard. So, I'm thrilled to have her a part of the team in that respect. I think that she'll bring a whole new dimension to us. And that, but I, she's just a really nice person as well, and I think that that speaks well of the way she's handled herself in 11 years she's been in, in Westwood, and they all speak, they're all very sad to leave, lose her, just as they were when I did them, when they told me, I told them I was leaving as well. But, but you know what? It's just, it's time to move on, and it was a time for her, because this is the next logical progression in her career, to, to become an assistant town manager, because she has that background. But I think what gave her the itch to go beyond HR was she, she did so well in the management, executive management program through Suffolk.
Right.
Which, you know, obviously broadens your perspective greatly by looking at all kinds of different issues, and where she graduated with such a high mark in that course, I think it really was the next logical step for her professionally. So, again, I'm very, very pleased to, to have her part of the team, and you're certainly welcome to stay for a few minutes and, and join us tonight. Certainly, you know, we understand if you can't, but you're more than welcome to stay.
I'd love to.
And you can sit right here, by the way. We weren't kidding about that.
I wasn't kidding.
I just, if I could just take one second. Randy Scollins was part of the selection process. He sat on the, on the team on a couple of panels, just not, not all the panels, of course, but Randy, do you have any words you want to say? Just add.
I'm just thrilled, excellent selection, Bill. I'm really thrilled to be working with Mary Beth, and I think we're going to do some great things. I think we have got some lightning in a bottle here now. This is really good for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right.
Thank you very much for the, the great welcome.
All right. Come on in. Come on over.
Okay. Our next item. We'll be discussing an RFP for town-owned properties. Sharon Wasson, the town planner, has provided us with a memo in our packet. And this has to do with the RFP that Sharon is working on, on the fire station. We had a discussion a couple weeks ago, the question came up about whether or not we wanted to keep the existing structure as part of a requirement or not. So, Sharon and I met with the planning board and got some input, and as a result of that, Sharon has put together this memo and is looking for input from the Board.
Oh, thank you very much for having me this evening. I've been helping Mr. Keegan work on an RFP to sell, sell the existing firehouse on the Common and the adjacent Keating Funeral Home that the town acquired through tax title. And I just circulated the map of our new Foxborough Center overlay district, and I highlighted in black ink the three lots that compose the parcel. The firehouse sits mostly on the one that's next to the word 140 and extends into the second lot, and then the more square lot is where the funeral home is. Altogether, though, that's only a little over a half an acre of land. It's only 42 feet and some inches in the front and 49 feet in the front and just over 90 feet in the rear, so it's a very long and narrow piece of land. When we were developing, we being the planning board, were developing the Foxborough Center Overlay District, we, you'll remember, there were a number of components to that article. It's kind of a catch-all article for things having to do with the downtown. And one of them was the brew pub article, to allow a brew pub in the downtown, that you could produce beer and sell it on site. And we jokingly talked about old firehouse ale. So, I began the RFP process, and I, as everyone does, went online and found an RFP from another community that I thought had done a very good job and was adapting it. And after about three days, it, it hit me like a bolt of lightning. Do we want to keep the existing firehouse? Is that important enough? Or is it important that whatever replaces it fits appropriately on the site? So, as Lorraine said, I spoke with the planning board, and, you know, their, their sense was that the new overlay district, which has even fewer setbacks than the general business district, is greater height and allows more uses. The trade-off being, though, there's some design criteria that you have to adhere to. This would be an ideal site to use that new bylaw on. So, I wanted to come to you all this evening and see what your thoughts are on the site. I know Jim knows it very intimately, working quite close to it. But, you know, the, the firehouse, you know, you think of Ghostbusters and, you know, all the iconic firehouse conversions, and it's a nice building. It doesn't quite rise to that architectural specialness. I don't know that people in town are particularly in love with it one way or the other, and I wanted to get a better sense from you all whether the, the building itself is important or that something that should, could be built there that, that fits or is appropriate. Again, since it's in the downtown, it goes through the design review board. Any of you that have attended their meetings, they're very thorough. They had seven sessions on the library, so, you know, they want to make sure they get it right. And it'll also go through site plan review, and as I reminded you in the memo, they need a permit from you guys for a municipal conversion. So, there's numerous, numerous permits and, and checks and balances that the town will make sure that, in fact, what's going there is a good example. One of the things I proposed in my memo, you know, you could put a fast-food 1500, 1800 square-foot fast-food sort of restaurant there with some parking. That would fit on the lot creatively, but all you'd get is a fast-food restaurant, you know? Clearly, we should be looking for something that's going to be a lot better in terms of tax revenue and looking at not just the sales price of the land, but the ability to return property taxes over time. So, I wanted your thoughts.
Sharon, you're actually asking if we would allow for the possibility of a developer coming in and giving them the option on whether or not they, they saw that a vision for.
Right.
The existing building. They could keep it if they wanted.
They could keep it if they want it.
But, but it also gives them the option that if they look at it and say it's unmanageable, it's wrong scale, there's no parking, I could do something better with the land as they find it empty.
Right.
And I have no problem with that at all. I think.
My, my final paragraph in dark, you know, suggests that maybe in the RFP, we want to really encourage them to use the new bylaw and, and in fact, do something sufficiently dense and, and appropriate for the site, knowing that it's going to go through the planning board for site plan, knowing that it goes through the design review board, knowing that it goes through this board. I found several communities that had a two-step process, where the first step was, tell us what you'd like to do there, and we'll invite three or four of you to give bids based on whether we like your concept. And that's something I can explore with Bill a little bit more and see if that's something we'd want to do, is to get a little bit more of an idea of what people would be interested in doing on the site.
Is the Keating property R-15?
No, they're both general business.
They are.
And the new downtown sewer district, these are included in it, and Roger and the Sewer and Water Commission have been working on a pilot program for sewer on Market Street. So, it would be served by sewer sooner rather than later, which is a big selling point for the property, that the line will come up.
I was thinking of a, a commercial enterprise would be actually reaching back into a residential neighborhood. The Keating property.
It's across the street is R-15. It's general business.
That's why I asked. I just wanted to know how, where R-15 ended.
Middle of Market Street.
Okay.
Jim, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I like the, I've seen it work very well in other towns where they put the request for proposal out saying, here's the three parcels, here's the square footage, these are your allowed uses, and then entertain proposals. Some people may come in with office with residential on top, other people might come in with a small restaurant, in, in trying to get away from, from a town dictating what should go there. I think it's more market-driven. So, you, I think you'd be surprised, you might get some really good ideas that you might not have considered at all. And then we have a committee that looks at them that says, all right, here are the five proposals that we're considering. You look at the tax, you know.
Right. Tax return over time.
You look at the neighborhood issues, and, and, you know, the, it's, it's obviously a sensitive area. You've got the Orpheum next door.
The Bethany Church.
You've got the Rotary, you've got Residential, so it's going to be a very unique development that I think would satisfy a lot of the people in town. So, I think if you put it out and ask developers what they would be willing and then review their concepts, you know, the schematic designs, I think that's a good way to go.
Madam Chair, clearly, what we want to do is, we want to find something that's going to enhance what's already there and sort of bring out the best of what's there. Obviously, you know, being next to a theater, you know, opens up some real possibilities. It's, you know, a dinner in a theater type of thing. You know, you create that environment. We actually recaptured that in my last employment where we created some, some nice, nice eateries right in the downtown area, which really brought life back into that whole area. So, hopefully, we can, we can try and capture that, that same type of environment.
David?
Yeah. I think getting input from developers to kind of think outside the box, to develop the site, you are going to have to think outside the box.
Yeah.
But to do that, the less restrictions that we put on, on the proposal, the more you'll expand your pool of potential developers. So, I think, I think the RFP has to be a little less restrictive. We can make recommendations in the RFP, but, you know, to say that, you know, you have to keep the fire station, but you can tear down everything else, I think it's, it's going to dilute the pool instead of expand it. So, that, that's my own recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah. My concern is how structurally sound is the fire station? Now, a number of years ago.
The patch.
A number of years ago, a car hit it and did a lot of damage. So, I, I like the idea that Jim and Dave had about, you know, opening up the RFP because I think this parcel is really going to be the beginning of the redevelopment of the downtown area. This, this, this is a very important development, so I think we should give as much latitude as, as we can, and, and hopefully, it'll, the developer will bring back something that is, will fit in with the Common area, you know, the area around the Common, because I think that's real important. I think people want to see something that's very cohesive.
I've asked a couple of firefighters if they think the fire station should be preserved in there. Their response was, no. So, I don't even think there's much love in what you'd think would. So I don't even think there's much love in what you'd think would be the natural constituency for that preservation.
Actually, I think the person who did the fire station also did the Orpheum Theater.
I think so, yeah.
So that's a little corner of history right there.
Yeah, it is, it is. And it was a big project for the town at the time, so, coming out of the Depression, so. Well, I thank you for the time and your ideas and Bill and I will keep working and hopefully we'll get something done.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Going through this process, when the RFPs, when we're at the point that it goes out and goes back, are we tied in any way to like the highest bidder situation or is it really more open than that?
Well, the property would be, but that's why I think some of the towns have done this two-step process, which is, tell us how you would develop it and then to five or six of them, say, give us a bid so that you don't have to take lowest bidder that wants to put in a fast food place.
So is that the direction that you're thinking of going?
Yeah, I think that's.
I think we'll work with Bill and I think that sounds.
What's our projected timeframe in this? I'd like to.
I want to get it done.
Yeah, I think we'd like to get it done.
Now that we're through the signed by law, I can put some more time to it.
Okay.
The next few weeks, maybe we can get it done.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I just have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
The money that we see from the sale of the property is going to be pretty substantial. Is there any way that can be dedicated to like the new town hall? Or is that something you can't do?
Well, we actually, we talked about that today, actually. We said, you know, it all depends on the timing of it. And then the question is, okay, if it doesn't go for this project, we certainly have all those projects down the road that we can dedicate it to. So we, we'll have the money. The question is, what's the timing of it? And how we can work that through? Because, you know, if we, based on the time that we have for the town hall project is that we want to go for soft cost money in November and then construction hard cost money in September of 2015. It's conceivable that we could have a sale done and ready to go before then. But, but it was, as we talked about, and I mean today, and Dave will update everybody later on tonight, is that we've been, you know, we're pretty comfortable with our financing approach and I think we have a pretty good handle on how we're going to handle this and do this and do the financing.
But I think Virginia's point, it should be dedicated to capital projects.
Yeah, it could be, it could help us.
For the long-term benefit of the town.
Randy, do you want to come to the mic, please? Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, the sale of the fire station itself, that would have to be dedicated to capital projects of a similar lifespan, you know, twenty-year lifespan of a, you know, minimum for a fire station. The property that we took through tax foreclosure is different, but certainly that can be reserved, you know, via, you know, a town meeting vote that it goes to its capital projects. But the fire station would have to go towards building projects in the town.
Is that the fire station plus the parcel right behind it?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, yeah, the two parcels that make up the fire station.
Fire station, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks, Randy.
Everybody's clear that there are actually three parcels there?
Yeah, I knew that.
Okay, any other questions on this? All set?
All right, progress, making progress.
All right, thanks, Sharon.
Okay, the next item we have on our agenda is RFP for Town Council. I'd been talking with Bill about this and wanted to put this on the agenda. Periodically, the board will come to a consensus of whether or not they want to take a look at putting out an RFP for Town Council, gives, with the idea to give the board an opportunity to look at costs and, you know, service combinations that are available to us. So we thought this would be a good time to bring this forward. And I was hoping to have a discussion tonight that we could see if there is a consensus that we would like to pursue going through the RFP process at this time. So would anybody like to start the discussion?
Is there a specific town council? I mean, the town, there's Labor Council, there's, I think we have like four, Liquor Council. Are you talking about Galliman's firm as general overall council?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think the conversation that I had with the chairman about this was this, you can make it as broad or as narrow as you want. You know, you can really have this as, I mean, Labor Council tends to be a separate discussion in most cases. But you can, you can actually have a firm that could envelop all the specialties on the one roof. Or you could have, you could actually look at, and as I talked, I think I talked to Dave about this prospect, I said, you know, maybe we can look at multiple firms, firms that we could service town halls. But usually you have one general council that you go to dealing with things like town meetings, dealing with, you know, some of your, you know, standard, you know, legal issues. But there's always those specialty issues that, you know, that come up, whether it be licensing issues or, you know, alcohol issues or even dealing with land issues, you know, acquisition of land or selling of land.
How often had we gone, and I don't have any history, but how often had we gone out with an RFP process for functions like that?
Well, the last time it was done was just a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think in 2012, and it was a pretty spirited discussion and a kind of a divided board, but we went out for a legal council, RFP. And we hired Galliman in beginning of August of 2012. At that time, there wasn't really any rhyme and reason when we would go out for general council. It's usually in most towns is an issue and the attorney falls on the badish side of the issue and the majority, it gets brought up. At the time of the RFP, inside the RFP, it stated we were looking for Town Council for a term of three years. Okay, it said that in the RFP. We negotiated with him after reviewing, I think it was five or six different law firms. There were big Boston law firms that had everything under one umbrella, there were smaller ones. The board felt comfortable with Galliman in, so in July of 2012, we negotiated it, signed it in August. And in his acceptance letter, there's no formal contract, but he says he's anticipating per RFP a three-year contract. That night, we also had, the board had the discussion that it's a little uncomfortable because if someone says we want to change council, you know, why do we want to change? It puts the board in an awkward position and the council in an awkward position. So even though the RFP said three years, we decided that three years is a good time. Three or four years, I think, is what was discussed at the meeting. So now it's only been two years. I'm not sure what the advantage is to sending out another RFP. Well, unless it's something that I'm not aware of and things aren't working well, why wouldn't we wait for the obligation that we had initially for three years? Why are we doing it a year early? You know, what I'm afraid of is if we start this discussion, we've got a council, if things are working well, it kind of puts them in an awkward position that we're shopping around now, when I'm not sure of what the benefit is for doing it a year early. From my recollection anyways, and I think you were on the board and you were on the board too, so three out of the five were on the board in 2012. So I don't mind, you know, revisiting it, but it just seems like we're very early doing this for something that's working pretty well.
Any other comments?
The only, it does vary from place to place. In my previous experience, it was just an annual appointment. Just every July, they would make the appointment. If there was a need, if the board felt compelled, say, May or June of that year, they could decide if they want to go to a full, you know, process of evaluating council. More often than not, though, it did stay with their existing council, which was fine. But if there was a reason that they felt to go outside, they could do that. I'm not really familiar with a contract being done with Town Council for a specific term beyond that. That's new to me.
Yeah, there's no contract. There was a, there was a letter of intent that he sent and we approved it. And it gave, I think his rate at the time was a hundred and forty dollars an hour. He had, you know, so everything was spelled out. These are the expectations and this is where I'm at. And right in the letter, it said three years. So, and again, if there's reason to do it, you know, we can revisit it an hour, a year early. But I'm not sure if I'm hearing that there's reason to do it.
I would say that if there was an implied term and there's no issues, I would, I would say, let's table this until such time as, you know, the implied term is coming to an end or if there's an issue that arises.
And when is that term implied?
It would be August of 2015. So a year from now, basically.
But yet there's no contract.
The signed letter that he sent, I typically, I don't think towns have contracts with council because of the nature of it.
Right.
At the, may I speak? At the time when we did go out for new council, I think at that time, the town was kind of roiling in contentiousness. And I think when we did, we did decide to go back to Galliman's office, it was in my mind to bring back a little bit of stability. It was a known quantity and, you know, a little bit of stability there. Knowing full well that Dick's firm is a small firm and other boards have felt that they had to go out to get their own council because they felt that their office was not, didn't have the depth. I had questions about some legal issues that we've had in the past when I felt maybe we didn't have, didn't have enough depth. And I, I put it that I supported bringing Dick Galliman back. So I, I wouldn't feel uncomfortable going out with an RFP for a new town council.
John, do you?
Well, yeah, I've given this a lot of thought and I know that we had a very difficult fall last year. I've actually talked to Dick. I think that there's a, I could say a difference in style between what I expect from a town council and what Dick offers. Dick, I think, is a conciliatory attorney. He tries to get deals done. Sometimes I wonder, though, are we getting the best representation for the position of the board and the position of the town? So I'd like to see what else is out there.
You know, I had brought this up again. I thought, going back to when we did make the change, certainly, as Jim mentioned, it was a split board at the time on that change. And again, I just think, given the complexity of complexities of what we're dealing with, I've had conversations with chairs of two other boards, I think it would be an appropriate time to, again, look at the costs and the types of services that, you know, would be the best fit for the town at this time. So, you know, I'd ask that there be a motion to begin the process of an RFP for Town Council.
Second?
Under further discussion? I just think there's a, I'll say, a danger to keep changing Town Council. You know, not a lot has changed in the last two years where it was, it seemed like it was a good fit then, and it's not a good fit now. My experience with the previous council was it was a very litigious nature. And I've been in meetings where it was, you know, we'll challenge and we'll, you know, bring it to court rather than working it out. And I think over the last two years, if we had that mentality in that direction, I think it would be a lot worse than we are right now. I haven't heard it from the other boards. And I think if there is an issue, you know, I would have liked to hear it. I certainly would like to see the billings over the last couple of years to have that as a gauge. Because, you know, the Town Council is, on his per contract or a letter, is under the direction of the town manager. We used to get reports and then it slowly changed to not getting reports, well before your time. I don't know if we're spending a hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, but if people aren't happy, I just haven't heard it. So to shake it up, to go through another RFP from here, say, from other boards, where it hasn't, there's been zero discussion about it at this table, there's a lot of danger to going out for RFPs in the middle of, and again, it's not a contract, but the RFP said three years, we sat at this table and said three years, if it's not working out, we cut it short, but I just haven't heard that it's not working out. Just don't know what the benefit would be, that it couldn't wait a year.
Well, as a member of the board selectmen, I would like to feel comfortable with the, with the advice, with the legal documents that are being presented, written up by the Town Council. And I would like to see more of an advocate for the town rather than someone who's, whose philosophy, and this is Dick's philosophy, because I've had discussions with him. His philosophy is he is an accommodator. I would like to see more of a town advocate so that when the selectmen express something they want to see, I would expect the Town Council to actually do that because the selectmen want it. And I would think, and that's where I'm saying that I would be looking more for a town advocate than a firm that is an accommodator. So I've had my personal, you know, as a selectman, for the last, since 2012, I've been, you know, dealing with the office and I would just, I would just feel more, I would, I would like to feel more comfortable with the advice and the legal documents that I'm getting from the Town Council.
And I'm not arguing with you, but I was not aware that you're not comfortable with the Town Council's doing either written or presentation.
Well, you never, you never asked me. And that's not a discussion, apparently, that we're supposed to be having. We're having it, we're having it now.
That's why we're, that's why we're having it.
We're having it now.
Yeah. But one thing that Galliman and Cabral is, is consistent. When they presented at the table with their RFP package, they basically said, we're a firm that tries to work things out. So it's not like he came in and said, I'm going to do one thing and now I'm doing another. You were on the board two years ago. And you thought at that time that was a good approach.
Right.
It was voted for that. But he's not doing that anymore.
But I have, no, I have since, I have since felt that maybe it's true accommodating. Maybe I would like to see more of Town Council who is more responsive to the concerns, the needs, the desires, the orders, if you might go that way, of selectmen and other boards.
So, and again, I'm not arguing, but I just haven't heard it. Can you give examples where he's not responsive? Because maybe that would change my mind. I just haven't seen him not responsive in some of the shortcomings that you're talking about.
I don't, I don't think we should get into that type of discussion at the table here. I think, you know, Ginny, if you don't mind, has explained her thoughts on it, as has everyone else. So, you know, I don't want this to be a dissection of Town Council at the table here. So if the board will agree, I'd like to end the discussion and take the vote.
You made the motion, right? Ginny seconded it.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you.
So moving forward, who sends out the RFP and how does that?
Well, I'll prepare something, I'll solicit some documents from, and circulate it and get some feedback and if everybody has any questions about it before we send it out. It's actually, this is actually your request. I just, I'll be the person who prepares it, but ultimately, this is a board's argument, so. So you have to, because the disappointment comes to you directly.
Thank you, Bill. All right, the next item on our agenda is Board of Selectment Discussion, Call for Special Town Meeting. So, we have the date selected.
The date that we've been contemplating was November 17th, and we've been, for a couple of reasons. One is that if we get too much later into the year, we run into, run into the issue of setting the tax rate. And we want to make sure that we're, we've got enough opportunity for that to get resolved with the Board of Assessors and then, of course, the board. So, right now, we're looking at, there are two additional issues that we're looking at here. There's a list of nine items. There is two additional ones that we're contemplating adding. One is dealing with the Public Works addition at the, at their facility. And it's really just approval of the funding mechanism, as I understand it, really, really. And then, the last one was dealing with the, with the, potentially, the land issue that still remains to be seen whether it's going to happen, or the potential selling of land on Oak Street, that's town-owned land on Oak Street.
You understand this process has gone through last year, and it was somewhat contentious, and it was-
The reason, we had a, just a preliminary discussion with the, with the chairman of the Conservation Commission, myself and the chairman of the board. And we're going to leave it up to him to propose that issue to his own board first.
Okay. Who, is it the planning board that's bringing, who's bringing this issue up? Or this?
This is, this is actually coming from the Town Asset Review Board.
So, the Asset Review Board said revisit the Oak Street properties?
They have not, they have not said that.
Okay.
So, who brought it, who's bringing this?
Bill and I have discussed this.
Because there was land-
Just so I'm clear, there's a Town Asset Review Board, and they make recommendations.
Right.
And you're talking, so you're talking on behalf of the Town Asset Review Board?
No.
Because this was a crash and burn issue not too long ago.
Right.
A lot of people were up in arms. The Conservation Commission was irate about it.
Okay.
There was, went back to the seventies. I just want to make sure, if Lorraine's bringing this to you, you understand the pitfalls, because this should be brought, there's a whole committee that reviews town assets.
Right.
And for this to be pulled out and brought to you outside of that review committee-
We talked about that with Bob last night, and Bob said that he would talk with his commission first. That would be the first step. Then I would bring it back to Town Asset Review, put it through that process. Because I've been waiting for this original meeting from Sharon, you know, this original presentation that Sharon gave earlier, before I would call that group back together, so that we have the input from this board for the fire station. And then we know if there is any potential to have any type of blessing from the Conservation Commission on those properties that we could bring that back.
Shouldn't it be the other way around? Shouldn't the Asset Review Board be making the recommendations to bring to the Conservation Commission? That's the way it's always worked in the past.
Yeah, it's sort of six and one half to the other. I think, I think we were looking to, at least get some indication, as I understand it, from, whether or not they would even open to the concept of selling the land first.
I just want, this is deja vu all over, so they've made, only because it was a very heated issue, we spent, I think, attorney fees on it. It went back to the seventies. It was a very-
We're not looking to establish, we're just trying to establish a dialogue first, and it may not-
Hey, I don't want to speak for the commission, but I think they gave their answer, and it was pretty clear. The Conservation Commission.
Based upon the conversation we had last night, though, they are interested in other land that could actually help them in their long, as a, as a sort of, you know, a compensation for that, that's owned by the town as a trade-off. So, there was a, actually, a pretty open dialogue about that last night.
At the Conservation Commission?
No, with the chairman, just with the chairman only. And he's going to bring it back to his board before that gets brought for consideration. Just so you know, though, I mean, it's possible we may not make this warrant with this, with this article, because that process may not have enough time to play out.
Bill, when does the warrant close? If it's, if the special town meeting is the 17th?
You can actually-
We can open and close it tonight?
You can close it tonight, potentially.
Is there time to vet these topics?
Well, there will be time. We think, the other items, we're not as concerned about, because we believe those things will be addressed.
Well, I mean, one and two, fine. I mean, but, you know, some of these items here with, you know, additional liquor licenses, I think we need to have a discussion on that.
Oh, yeah.
Right. And that's on your agenda for consideration tonight, too.
You know, some of them do require some study.
But I think the issue is holding, having a placeholder for them, and so if they are ready, you can actually include them, fold them into the warrant. So, you wouldn't actually require a full language of these tonight. It's a question of, do you want to include these items in your warrant for consideration?
One thing we've talked about in the past is warrant articles need to have a defined and known sponsor.
Okay.
If there was a sale of land on Oak Street, who would be the sponsor of that?
I would think in that case, wouldn't it be the Asset Review Board?
I would think it would be the Conservation Commission, because it's their property.
Okay.
But are they the ones who are asking for this?
Really? I mean, at this level, to put this on the agenda, I mean, the town warrant in November, when we haven't even met with the Conservation Commission? It seems like we're taking steps way back from what we've learned in the past of having authors.
Right.
This is the first time we're seeing these nine items, a lot of these, and we're trying to vote on it tonight for November 17th meeting?
Not at all.
They're saying we could close it tonight.
We can close it.
I mean, mechanically, we could, but I still think, these are topics that are going to be on future Board of Selectmen agendas that we can work things out.
Yes.
But these are basically a preliminary lineup of what might be warrant articles.
For November.
Yeah, potentially.
For November.
Okay. So, we really don't need any action on this?
No, this is just more of a notification for you to do that, but, Randy, your process is different here than the process I'm used to, so maybe you can help with that, with that language in terms of how you-
I don't get it.
What you used to say.
Is there, does anyone have a copy of this new document, so the public can follow along? Some list of potential town meeting articles?
This is in the packet.
It is?
It's in the packet, yeah.
Maybe I lost it.
Was this document, it's this document?
I don't recognize it.
It's one page.
Probably my bad, thank you.
Okay.
No, I have a copy.
Well, we'll get you one if necessary.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry for the interruption. Sorry, Randy.
No, it's okay. In my experience here, the process has been, there's been a draft list, which the board, you know, ultimately determines whether or not, you know, they want to go forward with all of the items on the list, or they want to add some other items on the list. And yes, often, it's that the warrant is kept open for a little bit longer, but I think, given the, that, I think, we're trying to keep this to a small warrant, so we weren't really looking for anything to be added. It was just a matter of whether things would be subtracted. And Bill's point about placeholders, I mean, we've done that in the past as well. We've had warrants where, as I know you all know, where we've had items on there, and they just, you know, for whatever reason, they're not, they're not ready by the time we get to town meeting, but we wanted to provide the option.
As long as they're placeholders, and we don't subject AdCom to wasting time vetting them and pulling them back.
So, out of these nine items, is the AdCom, is the AdCom set up, and are they reviewing any of these?
They're reviewing one of them tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, the signed bylaw.
Signed bylaw. Lively shaking his head, no idea.
Well, we are, but you know how I feel about town meetings in November. Not positively.
So, well, tomorrow night starts the first one.
The signed bylaw?
And that will be the AdCom's first meeting, official meeting of the year, so I'm hoping there'll be discussion about future meetings and when they'll, when they'll want to hear the rest of the warrant articles.
We certainly want to get as much information to them as possible, as soon as possible.
Can we go down the list and write who is bringing them forward specifically? So, the funding for the new police officer salary, would that be coming from the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, and the chief of police. I mean, he's actually got that already established.
Funding for town hall.
That'll be, that'll be the Board of Selectmen.
Constables, the amendment to the general bylaw, BOS. Assigned bylaw, BOS. This is a general bylaw. Additional liquor licenses, Board of Selectmen, remove auditorium restrictions, Board of Selectmen. Or is that planning board?
I think that was planning board, as I recall, right?
Sorry.
That's a question.
The town actually owns that land, so actually, it would be, it would be the Board of Selectmen.
Whose restrictions are they?
The state actually set those, yeah, we require special legislation, remove the restrictions.
Okay, that'd be us.
Yeah.
Petition legislature, auction, three-quarter acres off of Dexter Road. I believe that's planning board related. Can find out.
I don't really understand that.
Accessory apartment, planning board. Foxborough Center overlay, planning board.
Yeah, the next two are clearly planning board.
And then, the Public Works would be the board.
Yes.
Okay. And Oak Street would be-
That was just, it's just a case, so they actually have the funding, but it's just a case of the funding mechanism has to be approved by them.
Is that, is that the building?
Yes.
Correct.
This is the DPW building?
Yes.
The new administrative offices.
So, I thought we had talked about opening and closing this tonight, again, just so that it's closed, can't get any longer. Then, you know, as soon as we hear back from Conservation Commission, you know, that would make a decision on that one.
Given the level of concern that Jim had about this issue, does it, does it make sense for the holdoff on that issue until we have further understanding? Until the fall, until the spring, rather?
Unless I'm missing something, I just, I'm very surprised it's on here, but if you guys, you and Lorraine have been having discussions with the Conservation Commission.
Well, we just had one conversation. I mean, and the idea was to at least initiate the conversation, and it may not, we don't, may not have enough time, is the point. And if there is, and the reason, we had a good conversation was because they have an interest in other land that would actually take this place.
There's a 14-acre parcel that they're interested in.
And that's, I think, the landfill, I think.
Is it time-sensitive that it's going to be on the November? Is there an end deadline that has to be attained by November?
It would be ideal to, if they agreed, it would be ideal to have that part of whatever the auction approach is for all the parcels that we're talking about. To do one auction, you get better turnout and probably better competition.
And this is something the Asset Review Committee's been discussing? The other parcels?
The last-
We already had a shortlist at our last meeting.
This is the item from the shortlist, and the Town Asset Review Committee had made this recommendation to back the time, the discussions that you're referencing, so, and in my discussions with individual members of that committee, you know, the committee hasn't changed its opinion. Obviously, we'll get back together to discuss it again.
And we don't think, based upon the conversation we had last night, that all five lots will be for sale. We don't think that's probably possible. We think that a number less than that will certainly be a consideration, but, again, it's ultimately up to the Conservation Commission. We're not denying their process here. The question is, is it worth their while to consider this, given the fact that there is a trade-off of additional land that will help offset that?
Yeah. And it's all around the endangered species that they found there, so.
And we're all sensitized to that.
So-
So, that was the logic behind it, Jim.
Not just the bigger picture? I mean, something that the town's been focusing on for quite a while is the town hall. By having 11 articles on a special town meeting, is that going to detract from the efforts on the town hall? In other words, you're going to put people in, which people don't like special town meetings in general, you're going to get 11 articles. How is that going to affect kind of the town hall issue? This is just more than I expected, I guess.
I think maybe if, like, for example, these planning board articles, depending on the complexity of them, that might make it less onerous, this number. So, maybe for our next meeting, could we have some more in-depth discussion, maybe have Sharon come back and just explain-
Fill us in some more about the-
Fill us in some more about the planning board items. We're going to talk tonight, start a discussion about liquor licenses. Tomorrow night, everyone will be able to see, really, the extent of the work on the signed bylaw changes. And that would start that process off, so. You're right, you know, I don't want to take away from the town hall project, that's for sure.
Number five, the additional liquor licenses, that has been such a hot item, and I know the state's changed the legislation, and there's what-if scenarios. I just don't see 11 items going successfully through the advisory committee, when we're just getting this, a lot of this tonight, and then having the wherewithal to make formal recommendations on all of this, and not spend time on the town hall, where we're still debating new and renovated, and, you know, we've basically got a month to do all of this. Two, maybe two months.
For the liquor license piece of it, is the concern that, I mean, the legislation hasn't changed, so we would have to do this petition, this same type of petition as before?
I just don't know what additional liquor licenses mean. Is it one, is it twenty?
I think that's the next item on our agenda, so we'll talk about it then. Okay. So, just for-
Well, mechanically, you're just saying, let's close the warrant.
Yeah.
Is that the issue? And say, these are the, these are the potential warrant articles, and then we can subtract. If we don't vet them appropriately, we'll just take-
Process-wise, you, when you formalize, how, when do you off, and how often do you, how quickly do you formalize the warrant?
Two meetings, three tops.
And you actually subtract items off your warrant?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so this is just a, this is an initial proposal?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to get to the subtraction component earlier than later.
Yes.
Fair enough.
I have empathy for AdCom.
Yeah. Well, I think we, the more we can make this an easier meeting for everyone, I think that's the goal, so.
Okay. All right. Someone like to make a motion on the special town meeting warrant suggested list?
How could I phrase this? I'll move that the Board of Selectmen accept the 11 items, and I'll put the 11 items on, a list as warrant article topics for the November 17th town meeting, and close the warrant.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So, it's to accept and to close?
Yep.
Yes.
That means that no additional items can go on.
No additional items?
And again, as we're going through them, I'm guessing five or six of these may drop off. Just because of their complexity.
Yeah, I don't, as, I don't know.
I know where you're going. You like to put the focus of this town meeting right there.
Well, I just, it just seems, for a very short period, we're putting a heck of a lot on there, and then trying to get a lot of stress, trying to figure it all out. Where I don't see the urgency in a lot of these. And just to put it on there and then go through the process of taking them off, I would rather have a little bit better of a process, that they don't get in there in the first place. There's no way that 11 healthy articles, robust articles, is going to get debated on a-
But I think that's-
We've talked about this in the past, of this process of getting to this point, and we've boxed ourselves in again.
I think that's the point, though, of having the discussion over the next two to three meetings, or two to three weeks, I guess. We'd have to do it over the next-
We'd have to do it at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
We're into the second week of September.
Let's talk about number five tonight and see what the board thinks. But then, I think, having planning board come in and explain, you know, that it may not be
Yeah, that might be a drop hit.
Have these warrant articles actually been written, or are these just the subjects of the warrant articles? So, they haven't even been written yet?
No.
Right.
Signed bylaw is going to be written.
Yeah, well, that's fair, yeah, yeah. I should have given a blanket, no, there's been some that clearly do.
The planning board, do you know if they're written already?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I like the idea of seeing what the actual warrant article says before we possibly list it on the, you know, on the warrant. Because it could be something completely out of left field, that nobody here would support at all, and why even waste time?
Well, we can provide, certainly provide more information to you before the next meeting, so you'll know that.
Okay. So, we can get some drafts to these?
Right. We could do that.
All right.
So, the motion is for these nine articles, plus the two that were just added to 11?
Yep.
And it will be no more than 11? And it would be no more than eleven, and, and potentially less.
I, I just, not to belabor, but you see my point, where we, we've got nothing in front of us, no documentation that any of this stuff is, is big or small. And, and it's just, we intentionally tried to avoid this in the years past. And I just don't see the need, if someone says we need to do this because we're under the deadline for funding, or, or these groups have been working on this for a year. But these things, a lot of these, we just haven't heard about before, and, and two of them didn't even make the list as of when the folders were put together. So it's just, the, the, the process just is maddening to me right now.
Well, I, I can understand, but could we, could we vote to like, close it? Close the warrant, so nothing else can be added?
But that was the point.
Yeah, and then see next week, see some, some draft of, of each warrant article, and we step throwing, throwing the ones out that we don't feel are appropriate.
Let me just say, I, I apologize to the board, this is my first time going through this process with you, I, I'm used to seeing a list of maybe as many as thirty articles for a special town meeting, that's, that happens.
What would the harm be to wait till next week?
But it, it could be, we could provide the information to you, and you can take a look at it.
Right, but at least could we close it tonight, so that they, no more can be added?
Right.
So then you're, at least you're dealing with eleven articles, and then we can review them, uh, the next meeting. You know, with a draft of the warrant, so we'll know what, we'll know what the warrant.
We can do that.
Article says.
No issue.
Does the board wanna have a special meeting in between to do this?
I'm out of town next week.
Okay, all right. Well. So we have the motion, is there a second?
I seconded it already.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of opening and closing? Say aye.
First for mechanical purposes.
Yes.
To get the process moving. I, I, but I still think the same, uh, level of discussion's gonna have to take place, whether this is still open or closed.
Right.
I mean, the fact that this is in front of us, I just don't want any more added.
Right.
Correct.
But I think the spirit of this thing is to go through and, and sort out which ones are important, which ones can wait.
Right.
And pare it down to a manageable few. So in that respect, I don't mind closing the warrant today.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, Jenny, I didn't see your vote. All those in favor?
No.
Four.
Opposed.
Four to one? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is to actually have a discussion about this topic, the proposed warrant article for special legislation for liquor licenses. I wanted to start the discussion, again, related to the fact that, um, we're looking at moving things forward in terms of the fire station RFP process. Um, we have no available licenses, uh, for full liquor licenses in the town right now. We also have requests from two restaurants, one of the letters is in our packet here. Who are currently beer and wine license holders, who, you know, state for biz, business success reasons, they would like a full liquor license. So, I think there is definitely been a desire out there from some business owners, but also, um, between the fire station location. The Foxfield Plaza area, um, potential development in that area. Some potential perhaps at the, um, Foxborough Plaza. Which we used to call the Bradley's Plaza. So, I, I thought that, you know, maybe we could start this discussion and, um, toss around some thoughts on, uh, what people were thinking about additional liquor licenses for the town. Anybody like to start? I'll start. Well, um, I, I think, like I just said, there's a desire from certain business owners, uh, which I think would be helpful to their success, uh, in our town. I think we want to, um, be able to support those smaller restaurants in their ability to compete with others. You know, certainly as we're looking at more development, I know we have requests from upon, um, you know, from the craft organization in the past, they've made requests for additional liquor. You know, we've had discussions about, um, potential additional liquor licenses being available in their area. But I think, you know, that in combination with how we're looking at, uh, the town as it, as it, um, begins to move forward with some of these changes and development. Um, I think it would be helpful to have additional licenses available for restaurant types of venues, um, on a go-forward basis. And certainly, I think it will make that property, the, um, fire station property more attractive in terms of RFP proposers. And, um, again, hopefully would add to the competitiveness of that bid process. So, that, that was my thought on it.
Um, two questions, one is, so the, the premise is that, um, economic development is congruent to the number of liquor licenses available?
It, it certainly can be a, uh, it certainly is, is an economic engine these days, I mean, liquor licenses actually help develop restaurants. They, they, you know, expand food establishments, and they do help provide, uh, bring activity into a downtown area. But that's been proven on many, many occasions, so. So the question is, that if we, I, I think the, the thinking was here that, and, and I, I think it's, I think it's, it's good thinking, that if you, if you develop those, redevelop those pieces in the downtown. You're gonna need something to help, you know, to, to bring some activity into, into the, particularly after three o'clock, there's really nothing going on, uh, after three o'clock in the downtown area.
Well, if you take a look at Foxborough as far as zones. Foxfield Plaza is a zone, Bradley's Plaza is a zone, downtown is a zone.
Correct.
Um, you know, Page Place is a zone.
Correct.
And, um, to be fair to the other zones, all the energy has been going north. And, um, that's why I'm just trying to get a discussion, and, and I think it is true. Restaurants, you know, in proximity to other businesses, they do feed off of each other.
Correct.
But liquor licenses, uh, you know, for better for worse, I think a liquor license in a restaurant is actually appropriate. I'm not looking for any more bars in town. But, um, I think it is actually a, a driver for economic development. My second question is, just so we're all on the same page, is what's the mechanism presently, cause I know the state keeps shifting on this, is to, how, how do we even begin the process? And, and how much of it do we control?
Well, well, first of all, the request will have to come to the board, the board will actually determine how many licenses they'd like to petition the legislature for. And then they can make the request through the legislative process. That process has not changed, uh, until now. There was a, an amendment, uh, there was an attempt by the governor's office to request that, that the, the cap on liquor licenses be removed completely, and that the towns themselves would be able to determine how many they want. That legislation failed, uh, it didn't, didn't make the, make the grade in, in, in the House. The governor was actually supportive of the measure, but, and I think even the senate was, was supportive to a degree as well. It just, it didn't, it didn't get enough support in, in the House. So I, I have to believe that there will be further discussion along that point.
But the process presently exists, it's all special legislation.
It's all, still all special legislation. Now, in the sense is that, and I, I think, and Randy and I speak to, uh, legislative delegation quite a bit, just to see what's going on. And, and the sense in the, in, in, um, legislature these days is that they are somewhat supportive of granting these additional licenses, because they, they think that, um, they know that it is important to cities and towns and how they develop it. I guess the, the, the concern, at least on the legislative end, was that if they continue to grant too many of them, or cities and towns grant too many of them, the value of them go down. So they're, they're concerned about, you know, maintaining the, the value of, of the licenses and those, and the, and other establishments that are there as well. So the question is, you know, what's the right number?
That was my next question.
Yeah, what is the right?
And who determines the right number? In other words, has Sharon done a study, uh, to say, if, if we were to say have a ten-year plan for an economic build-out in these zones? How many licenses would be required?
It's, as many as the market will, will support. So that's what comes out.
So how do you go to town meeting with this? That's, that's where I'm trying to.
Between now and November, what, what's the goal in November, to say, we want to the state, we want eight? And what's that based on? Or we want twelve, and what's that based on? What, what, between now and November?
I think, you know, based upon, I mean, it was certainly, the, the craft organization, I think, is, is expressing an interest of, of looking for additional licenses as well. The question is, you know, what's the number gonna be? And then ultimately, you know, what's our number gonna be? Uh, the only thing we can do at this point is determine what we think is, is possible, based on what we know currently. The craft organization will certainly tell us what their, what their needs are. And then we have to, then you as a board have to determine, you know, what you're willing to support.
But Bill, wouldn't, so if you ask, and, and you're right, everything's in a little bit of a node or a zone. So if you ask Foxfield Plaza, they're gonna tell you what they want. If you ask Brad, Bradley's Old Brad, they're gonna tell you what you want. So everyone says that they want six, so then we go to the town meeting for a request for forty. I mean, at some point, you gotta say, between now and November, where does it, you know, the planning board probably knows better than this board of where those zones are, what the economic, uh, what the potential zoning is. You know, yes, we're the granting authority to give them out, but to go to town meeting and ask for a number between now and November, how are we possibly gonna figure that out without reaching out to the community, such as the planning board?
Well, it's, it's sort of a ongoing process, as I see it, because, um, you know, I, I can tell you that every place, virtually every place I've been to can always say that they could use more.
Then they're gonna say that, and if I was a business owner that was a laundromat, I would say, I'd wanna do a restaurant, and I want more, so.
Well, one mechanism is to actually ask for a few more than you think you need, hold them in reserve, they don't have to be issued.
Correct. And, and, at one point in time, the APCC used to, used to hold, used to have a, a quota for each town. Uh, but now they, they sort of gone away from that, because they, they felt that, they, they understand that how important it is for economic development reasons to, to grant these licenses. It, it's interesting that the stronger that the, the light, the alcohol laws have become, the more licenses have been granted, because, um, because people do like to go out and they like to eat, and they like to have a drink with it, with their meal. So it's just really that, it's just, it's the environment that we're in right now, that, that, that we, that we have that. But you're right, you can have, you can have as many licenses as you want, it's up to you to ultimately determine if you wanna grant them or not.
It's, maybe we, um. I could ask to get on the agenda with the planning board and have this discussion with them at their next meeting, if they have time, and, uh, then I can bring back some information.
Does anyone know if the master plan has addressed this?
I don't think it would, I'd be surprised if it did.
Liquor licenses?
Cause that's really, that's a licensing issue that's.
No, I was, I think, address the need.
Right, right.
I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm with Jim, I mean.
If you ask me.
What number's right and which one's wrong?
If you ask me right now, that what I know, I know of at least, um, at least a couple that, um, that could be used. I, I know that the, that the capitalization's looking to, to expand up there for a couple more, uh, at least I've heard three or four in that potential. And then I've heard also more, three more potentially on our side. Uh, looking for, you know, a couple in the downtown area, and maybe one in the Foxfield Plaza area, that would help that.
And then there's the two restaurants who are asking to be considered.
Yes. Right now, we have, we have a couple places that, you know, you have liquor, you have beer and wine licenses, but most, by, by and large, beer and wine licenses aren't nearly as popular as, as full, full alcohol licenses.
And this should be consideration to the, the businesses that do have liquor licenses, if you're gonna give out four or five next door, their businesses are gonna suffer, and they've invested in a license.
Correct.
That had a little more, um, value until more came along, so there's just a lot to consider.
It is.
To try to get this on the November ballot, that, that I don't see, I don't see a plan, other than putting it on a piece of paper and say, we want more. There's just a lot of steps to understand it. And, and, you know, I'm asking these questions here, in two months, you know, voter A is gonna stand up, and it's gonna be embarrassing unless it's a well-thought-out plan, cause this is something, this is one item that affects our town largely, is the liquor licenses. We're dealing with it, um, every other meeting at some level, so.
Every, every meeting.
Every meeting?
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a, a group of people that would say, why the heck would you want to do more? There's a group of people that would say, if you don't do more, you know, you're, you're kind of ignoring the progression of our society, where you wanna go out and have a dinner and, and a drink. And, and I'm sorry, but five people can't figure this out between now and November, we really can't. You know, it, it needs a joint discussion with the planning board, with people, with business owners, and, and it's a little, um.
I think it's premature.
You know, to put it on a line item and say, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on it.
Well, I think one of the things that was contemplated, of course, at least I know for certain was contemplated, was the idea of, uh, if we do end up, you know, developing the, the firehouse, fire property, that, that would be a logical place to put one. I know for the fact that there is, there are, you know, new developments contemplated up in the, in the, in the, in the Patriot Place here, so. So those are things that we know of, that are, that are being contemplated at this time.
But if you were gonna get on the road to selling those properties quickly, as Sharon said.
Right.
Would the potential buyer want assurances that a liquor, a full liquor license would be available, should they buy the property for development?
Well, I don't know.
Or would they go forward without that assurance?
That's a fair question. I mean, cause I don't know, you can't really guarantee a license before you go.
Yeah, but is the value of that property, if we had available full liquor licenses, would the value of that property go up?
Uh, I think it would.
Thanks.
Well, you know, when, when we talked about bringing sewer in, and, um, re, you know, development of the downtown, that was one of the things that people talked about, oh, in the master plan, oh, we'd love to have restaurants downtown. Don't have enough liquor licenses, and we didn't have sewer, well, now sewer's coming in. And with legislation, we can get enough liquor licenses. And we do need liquor license, the, the, Foxfield Plaza, that development didn't go through, but one of the components of that development was a, um, like, I don't know, it was Applebee's, it was a Panera on one side, and something like an Applebee's on another. Applebee's needs a liquor license. Bradley's Plaza, that, that has no liquor licenses right now, that, that could be developed. So that's a business area, a development area, Foxfield Plaza's a development area. Uh, Chestnut Green's a development area, we know those. We also have the Firehouse, that's a potential developing area, and then we have the Mandarin Chinese Restaurant that sent the letter, and I don't know what the other.
The Asian Ginger.
Asian Ginger. So we have a ballpark figure, we know, potentially, how, how many licenses, so I don't, I think you can kind of figure out how many licenses you should request. And remember, it doesn't, you, you have to, this has to go through town, town meeting has to approve the, giving orders to the representative in the state senate to, to, uh, write, you know, submit the bill for these licenses. Doesn't happen on a, you know, it doesn't happen on Wednesday, and then we get the licenses on Thursday. It has to go through a hearing process in the legislature and everything, it takes a long time. Granted, they use, it's kind of like generic language, but you gotta wait in line, and it doesn't happen overnight. So that's why, if we're going to offer these parcels of land for development down the future, when, you know, when we have sewer, we have, you know. Let's have the licenses of, available, are almost available, so that, that can be a selling point.
We don't need to bring that, that in November, because the sewer's not gonna be available for a while. The RFP isn't even ready yet to go out for the sale of the fire station, so you, you have time.
Yeah.
These, these, these should be well thought out before they're.
Yeah, but the, the thing is, it's the legislation that's gonna take, gonna take a while, believe me, it takes a while.
You can't get to the legislation unless it's, it's voted for at a town meeting.
Right, exactly.
So why, why cut your nose off and spite your face? Why not prepare, be prepared to present it thoughtfully at town meeting? It's, I, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna have enough information, we, you know, we're throwing numbers out there, could be ten, could be fifteen. We know, we know of possibly eight, do we keep four in reserve? I don't know, if you, if you go to, if you go to town meeting and say, we need twenty, uh, you know, twenty liquor licenses, people are gonna look at you like, what are you doing?
Well, we also have to decide if they're gonna be site-specific, cause I know in Mansfield, they passed legislation where they actually said, okay, we're asking for some, some licenses, and they were site-specific. That has to be decided also. And that's another reason why you wanna see the warrant article before you can have an actual discussion.
Well, I, I think, going back, going back to, excuse me, I didn't mean to, to cut you off there, but going back to the earlier conversation, though, it sounds to me that you need to give some more thought to this. Because, basically on your point, David's point, and Jim's point, that, you know, if we get in front of town meeting, and, and town meeting says, okay, what's your, what's your plan for this? What's the bigger plan for this? Cause if you have a economic development plan, which I think is fair to have, that says, look, we need this many licenses, it just, it means you're not gonna be that much more successful in getting the support to get it done. And then it also, it also helps the legislature, too. Say, look, you, well, not only did they have a, a number, but they had a plan, it's how they're gonna use them. It's easy for them to make that, to, to get their support.
But, but, um, doesn't the, uh, this has been discussed for a long time in, and with, with the planning board. I mean, I'm sure they are pretty well along on a plan that they can present.
The planning board?
Well, they have, they have the master plan and stuff, but they know, they know what.
But we were just saying the master plan doesn't talk about liquor licenses, but now we're saying they must have a plan.
Yeah, but they, they know what, what parcels of land have been, they've been approached on for development, and what the concerns are. How many times somebody has said, oh, I'd like to develop it, or you don't have liquor license. How many times somebody has said, oh, I'd like to develop it, or you don't have liquor licenses, okay, we'll go to Mansfield. You know, stuff like that.
So, you're.
You're just trying to be proactive.
You're referring to the nodes of development, in other words.
Right.
You know, there's, you, they, they pretty much know where the, where the areas are gonna develop. I think they know that, but they, with respect to the specific number, that, that's still open for discussion, obviously.
Right. I mean, nobody's gonna be able to put anything on, in the middle of South Street.
Right.
Because it's not zoned far, and you can't do it. So, there are certain areas where you know a liquor license would be an appropriate thing to have for an establishment.
It's an interesting debate, because I, I, I can be persuaded both ways on this one, because I, I understand that the idea of having the, you know, the, the plan for it, but the other side of it, I know that there is actual need for some licenses right now, that, well, it won't hurt us if we have them in place, and, and ready to go when development occurs.
Yeah. I mean, if, at a minimum, we were to request a license for the fire station, a license for the two restaurants that are requesting it, and one additional one, that's four.
What I'm concerned about, then we figure it out, and the next year, we said it should have been eight.
Oh, no, it, that's, I'm just saying that, that, those are the ones we know of right now, that there would not be much question about, really, in terms of the logic behind it.
But, but is there a drop action to your point? Uh, that, you know, if you need to go back again, many people do all the time. They, they ask for additional ones.
And.
Potentially, but i- if, if we know what the demand is, then let's fi- find out what that demand is and present it thoughtfully. I'm sorry, but five selectmen saying, this is our article, we want seven, and, okay, have you checked with the police and, and public safety? What is their feeling, the planning board? How does it fit into the master plan? What's the economic over the next two years, next five years? Those are all qu- valid questions, and just because five selectmen say, well, you know, we got a letter here that one restaurant asked for it, and we think it, it, it's a potential to crash and burn, and then the credibility goes a little bit, is a little diminished for the next time we have to do it. So, I'm not, I'm not just, you know, I'm an advocate. I think downtown, it would suit them well to have some nice restaurants. Foxville Plaza, you know, but to get it on a piece of paper tonight, get it in front of the advisory committee, and then vote it on at town meeting, who's gonna present it and what's the rationale? I don't have it, and I don't think anyone at this table does without reaching out. That's my only point.
I think the only thing we can get out of this discussion is, I think we all agree that, uh, in order to improve the downtown area and some of the other zones, some full liquor licenses are necessary. We all buy into that.
Yes.
Absolutely.
That's a start.
No, that's a good point. That's a very good point. So, I guess the question is, and, and, you know, we don't have to get into it further tonight, but my, if, if any of you have any ideas as to how we can further improve that, that case.
Well, I think, Laurie, did you say?
It'd be helpful for me to know what, what you're looking for.
Putting the planning board in and all, all stakeholders in this process.
Right.
Um, I don't know, in our discussion, we might be gonna get some sense for the universe of what's needed.
Okay. So, stakeholders, meaning the planning board, the police chief, or the police chief in this case, and, and who else, town planner?
I was thinking of the businessman that actually is gonna be using them, or have them already.
Trying to.
You raise a good point about the, um, the dilution of value, if, if we have more, so.
Ask me a balance. There's no questions. I gotta give a balance. So, I think, but you know, I'm also a believer, too, that, that, that business begets business, so in many ways, you know, if, they'll, they'll be the measure of, they'll know when, when too much is enough, cause if, if the market won't, is saturated, they'll know that. Probably better than we will.
But, but we also have to be cognizant of what the, the people of, of Foxborough had expressed, that gee, I'd like to be able to go downtown for dinner. You know, and in this day and age, downtown means nice dinner and some wine, or beer, or hard liquor or something.
So, is it the pleasure of the board to have this, a further discussion on this point, to leave it on, so we can maybe get something in this, in this warrant? Or do you, or do you wanna, is it, would you prefer to think that it needs more, more time?
I'd like to leave it on and then start the, start talking to the planning board and develop. If, and it, in the final analysis, if we don't have time to put together a warrant article, but I'd hate to lose this time that we have now. You know, I'd just assume, do the, do the work toward the, toward the goal of having a warrant article.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't think we're gonna have time to really have a plan.
A full plan.
A full plan, but to start the process and at least keep it on the agenda and deal with it probably once every third or fourth meeting and move it along. You can't do it in a finite timeframe.
So, the first step really will be, our next meeting, we can see if we can have the planning board and police chief come for that discussion, and see if we can determine anything from that, okay?
Also, you can probably contact Barrows and Timmeltie to find out what's the, uh, you know, what's going on up at the State House, how to, you know.
Turn around time.
Yeah, yeah, turn around time and, you know.
We, we had a conversation about that just recently, uh, with, with the representative about that, and he.
He was receptive.
Yeah, he was pretty receptive to that.
Yeah. Like I said, the language is pretty generic language. You just plug in Foxborough, you know.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Good discussion.
Good discussion, that's right.
Okay, so the next item.
Thanks, Maureen.
Blowing my time frame here. Uh, the Town Hall Working Group, David Fellman is gonna give us an update on the Town Hall project.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Dave.
We'll make this short, just a couple of things. We finalized the, the verbiage on the RFP for the soft costs. Um, that's going in the Central Register and the Sun Chronicle on September seventeenth and the twenty-fourth, I do believe, uh, with bids due October tenth, hoping to have a recommendation to the board by October twenty-eighth, so.
It's, it's fair to say, for the public's, um, notification as well, that we are, the committee, with the exception, I believe, one member of the board is, is, uh, in favor of, of the, of the working group, is in favor of a new building. And, um, we have, we have researched the, uh, the, the, uh, renovation process pretty extensively, and, and we will make a presentation on that as well, um, so that, uh, because I, the, the one person who's been in favor of that has, has repeatedly said, well, it hasn't been fully aired. We, we intend to fully air that option. Uh, it's, it's our belief, our collective belief, that we think that, uh, for the value that we're gonna put into this, into this property, that building it new is, is actually better for the long term. So, that's, and that's, that's been our position for, for a while. But we just, we wanted to fully vet the, the renovation process to make sure that we, we weren't missing anything. I know there were a lot of fans of renovation, and, and generally speaking, we are, too. But we just, in the building that we're dealing with, there, there's not a lot of redeeming value in the building itself. And we're not dealing with, you know, specific type, like granite or marble or mahogany type finishes in the building that would you typically see in a, in a historic type building. And so, as a result, um, the question then becomes, okay, if that's not the case, then what's, what's the best value? The best value is develop a building that's, that's fully functional and, and workable for the, for the, for the present needs of the town. And so, that's where we're focused at this point.
You know, it's, it's easy to take a, a clean slate in an existing footprint. And draw a floor plan, not taking into account, once you've got it, and you start cutting it up and dropping posts and, and trying to coordinate mechanicals and, and structural within that structure, you start to lose efficiencies. The other thing is, you know, you're looking at an envelope that's forty to fifty years old, actually forty-six years old, and you don't know the construction. You don't know if, if they properly flash, uh, behind the brick on the, on the window headers and, and the weep holes, so that all has to be vetted. If you're, if you're truly wanting to do something for the next fifty years, you don't wanna, you know, spend X amount of dollars and have to go back every year, spending, uh, capital improvement money to do tertiary repairs.
To shore it up.
So, but we, we will, we will layer that out. I mean, it's not, we're not just totally discounting the renovation. We have looked at it.
And we respect the opinion of the advocate. I mean, we, we know that, you know, that person really has a long-standing history with doing renovation projects, and we, we respect that. They, they, however, the, the detail that we looked at this building indicates to us that in the level of renovation that has to be done, what does not seem to make sense financially.
Right, and, you know, the, the biggest thing that, that's handcuffing us is, we can't spend money to do a, a true feasibility study and and coordination on, on a floor plan within the existing structure, or an envelope study. So, we have to make a, an educated guess, uh, what the best, what the best option is, and I think collectively, we've, we've tried to do that. So, now, now we're looking at, at the site itself and trying to fit a, a new building within that that, that existing site plan that'll, that'll be appealing to both, uh, the, the South Street elevation and Liberty Street elevation.
Correct.
So, that's what we've been working on. Uh, we actually started late today on that.
Right.
And we'll continue to do that.
And we're working on a, a public information, um, uh, campaign, or effort to try and educate the, the public on what we've done to the state. Um, again, it's more about providing information to the public, so they're gonna get an informed decision at the town meeting. At the end of the day, ultimately, it's, it's, it's up to town to decide whether they want, what, which direction they wanna go. I think, I think the focus of our attention right now, though, is that to do nothing is not really an option. It's, if, if people feel very strongly about renovating, you know, and at the ultimate end of the day, if they, if that's where they wanna go, and, you know, we'll be guided by that, but it's not gonna be our recommendation to go in that direction. And I think we wanna make that, and, and we'll present our reasons why, um, and, and hopefully that, the, the committee will understand that. Uh, the second, um, and I think it's important to point out, by the way, that this process has done exactly what, everything we hoped it would, and that was to fully inform people on the committee that, that the pros and cons of each, of each issues, and, and I've seen people change their understanding and their, their direction on this, and David's probably a classic example of that. I think he started out originally as being a, a big fan of renovation. And then the more he's looked at it, uh, the more he understands building, building construction.
I was a, I was a fan for any sake.
Yeah, that's right. So, and, um, so he actually, uh, you know, he's, he's come full circle, so, I mean, so in that regard, I think it's really been a, a good process, so. So, thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Thanks very much.
Yep.
All right, uh, the last item on our agenda is Bill Keegan, the Town Manager Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, um, just a couple items for you. First of all, I think there's been some discussion about a, a memorial service that's going to be, uh, for nine eleven, that's gonna be held this Thursday. Um, the, the Fire Department actually has a nice service that they hold at the Public Safety Building, starts, I believe, about nine forty-five in the morning, uh, where they, you know, they, they do a brief service in members of, particularly of the firefighters that, who lost their lives in, in that tragic event on, on that day. So, anyone who wants to, you know, join with, with us on that, um, anyone from the public who wants to join us, I'm sure, I'm sure they're welcome to participate.
Nine forty-five?
Nine forty-five at the Public Safety Building.
So, nine eleven, that's Thursday, Thursday morning.
Thursday, nine eleven in the morning. All right, uh, nine eleven, I mean, nine, not nine eleven, uh, P M, but, um, the date, nine eleven.
Yeah.
And then on Friday, Friday morning, I'll be leaving very early for the ICMA Annual Conference in Charlotte, North Carolina this year. And, um, and I'll be returning back late Wednesday night of the following week. And I'll be back in the office on the eighteenth. We'll be having our next full department head meeting on the eighteenth. Mary Beth will be joining me, uh, on that morning as well. And then, um, and then last night, I, I attended the Recreation Committee meeting to discuss the, the skateboard park and, and its status, and how we can try and, try and come to some resolution of that. Uh, we heard the, uh, the advocates speak to why it's important for them to keep that park, and they raised some money to try and do that, and, and the, and the Recreation Committee was supportive of, of at least repairing what they could at this point in time, but they also recognized that there, there needs to be a sunset provision at some point, because, um, skateboarding, while it's, it's popular with some, has actually gone in a reverse direction. It's not as popular as it used to be. And I think, uh, they, they recognize that the, uh, the popularity of that site has, has sort of waned over time. So, we're gonna continue to, to keep it alive for the time being, um, and that, but once the, the funding runs dry, then, then, then they'll have to look at an alternative use for the site. But I think it was a good compromise, uh, that the Recreation Committee struck with, with the advocates for the, for the program. And I know I also, you know, reassured everyone that we, it is gonna be my budget proposal in, in twenty sixteen budget to, to create a, a centralized facility maintenance operation, which will design primarily to protect all of our town assets. And that includes, you know, skateboard parks, or any, any, any kind of asset that we think requires attention. And we'll put, we'll try and set money aside for each thing each year to, so, so to put on a schedule for repair. I know that Mary Beth had some experience of that in Westwood, too.
Just this year, we created a facilities department. We've now staffed it with two people. It has its own budget. We've wrapped the, all of the seven municipal buildings into this facilities department's budget. Looking at options for, you know, analyzing the bills, using a software, and, um, by consolidating it, they spent some good savings.
Is that, is that separate from the school facilities?
Yes. The school department has its own facilities department. There was talk of, of merger, but that proved to be a little more difficult, and, um, this is wrapped under the Department of Public Works.
We're actually looking at it more centralized for both, um, public town, town ed schools together. We're gonna go. So. So, that's, uh, that's the plan. That's my update for this evening. We've been very, very busy, a lot of difference, uh, but no, nothing I can really get into in terms of reporting. We're gonna be focused on town meeting, getting our reports ready for the, uh, the Building Committee over the next several weeks, and then, uh, and of course, I'll be getting you some more information on the, uh, on the RFP for, for the Town Council. So, that'll, that'll be, that'll be, except for trying to get that for the next few weeks.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, so, um, on to action items.
Okay, um, the first is a, um, request from Ba Louie to, for the early openings, um, the, um, home Patriot games on, on Sundays to open at eleven, and, um, it's the usual, it's usual request. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request by Ba Louie for an eleven A M openings on the dates of Sunday home games of the New England Patriots that begin at one P M.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, the next thing is the same, the same request from CBS Scene. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request by CBS Scene for eleven A M openings on the dates of Sunday New England Patriots home games that begin at one A, one P M.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next items are the, um, approval of the Selectmen's Minutes for August fifth and August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen.
I'll second that.
I ju- on the August fifth one, I just have on page three, Senator Timmy, Timmeltie presented a proclamation from the Mass Senate, not the U S, the, of the U N South. Okay. That's it. All those in favor of the amended?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanna say Deb's doing a great job with the mess, but.
Yes, she is.
She's off to it pretty well, so. The prosecutor's just jumped into the fray here, you know, she's done pretty well.
It's been a long time since I've seen you chat. Oh, okay. Um, the next is the, um, a review of the Board of Selectmen meeting dates, and there, I guess, is a holiday conflict in November and December.
Yeah, one's Election Day, I think, that we had a problem with in November.
We have the minutes from the nineteenth.
Oh, I thought we did them both.
Are we doing them both?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
And just, actually, just quickly, on the, on the meeting minutes on nineteenth, can you just put page numbers on it? Just so, in case they get separated.
Right now, we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-first, and I think we held off on the two Tuesdays from there, because it's, uh, Tuesday the fourth is Election Day. And then the eleventh is a problem, because that's Veterans Day. So, we, we the eighteenth is available.
Twenty-eighth of October? Or the eighteenth of November?
Eighteenth's the day after your town meeting.
Prob- do you think the twenty-eighth, just in case, there's a lot, you know, much to review prior to the town meeting?
Yeah, it's probably better.
Yeah.
Twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
So, we'd have the seventh, the twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth?
And cross off the eleventh? Does that sound all right? Um, and then December twenty-third?
You wouldn't wanna have it so in the time of the week of the third of November, would you?
Instead of the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, I'm away on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah. Is that all right with everybody?
What day is that?
Just sometime in the week of the third, not Election Day, obviously, but, uh.
Sorry.
Like a Wednesday or something.
I have a. I have a conflict, I think, on the few days just before the town meeting. I'll be leaving the, I have to go away the Thursday before the town meeting.
Good thing we have an assistant now.
Yeah, I know, that's right. Thanks, thanks for covering.
Adcom will be Wednesday nights, so.
Yep. Yeah, I gotta go.
I guess we'd need to check for the availability of this room on a different night if we're not going to do it on a Tuesday.
We're the only ones that'll be here, right?
No, we're team through the whole.
In this room?
In this room.
Okay.
Just can't have it on a Monday.
Just can't have it on a Monday, right. Okay.
I mean, the fifth or sixth, would that work?
Anything but a Tuesday, I, my work is the other nights of the week. So I, I just don't know if I have something, but that's why we have five members.
I mean, if you, if you want to leave it on the twenty-eighth, I, I won't be here though. Which is still fine.
Most of the issues should be all set by then, I would think. I hope.
Leave it on the twenty-eighth. It's always, it fits with your schedule better.
Well, I, I just don't like changing it to a Wednesday or Thursday just because one, no, regardless of who the member is. Because we've got five members on consistency on the Tuesdays.
Okay. Twenty-third of December, so do you want to do something two weeks in a row then? Or? The week after?
Don't we have to sign a lot of stuff before the end of the year?
Yeah.
So if the week after is going into January, right?
Well, the week, yeah, is Tuesday the thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
I think we had a meeting last year like this, didn't we?
Maybe it'd be better to do it.
Let me take a look.
The sixteenth.
Can all the documents be done by the sixteenth?
Yeah.
For the end of the, uh-
Can we tentatively pick the sixteenth if that works?
December?
Of December? And then just double check with Sandra that the documents would all be ready for us to sign by then?
Okay.
So if that doesn't work, it'll be the thirtieth?
So you wouldn't be on the twenty-third at that point?
No.
Okay. So ninth and the sixteen? Okay.
The other option is the thirtieth if the documents wouldn't be ready.
You can literally just come in and sign those. I would think you can come in and hold a meeting, approve them, and then send them in and sign them.
True, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, you can do that in the morning, you don't have to do it at night. If that's easier.
We had some marathon signings last year.
Yeah. I mean, if everybody's available, put it that way. I've done that before.
So we'll stick with the sixteenth and then if they're ready that night, we'll sign. But if not, we'll come in.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Teresa, what is it, October seven, twenty-one, twenty-eight?
Yep.
November twenty-five?
Yep.
And December nine, sixteen?
Yep.
Okay. I move that the board of selectmen accept the amended meeting schedule for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a common victual license application to new owners for Pizza Time at one twenty-one Main Street. Anyone want to discuss that? If not, I move that the board selectmen approve the common victual, victuals license for the new owners of Pizza Time at one twenty-one Main Street in Foxborough.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is an application for the old fashioned road races. If anyone has a discussion on that before we make the motion. This is a road race in February two thousand fifteen. And it's, our proceeds go to local charities, including the Prajaria Fund for Sam Burns, the Rentham Development, Food Bank's Mass Soldiers Legacy Fund, and, as well as the Foxborough High School.
My second.
Well, so I move that the board selectmen approve the application for Old Fashioned Road Race for February fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, with a snow date of February twenty-second, two thousand fifteen.
Jim seconded that? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is a similar request as the other few for Tavelino's for the opening, early opening Sunday hours during Patriots games. So I move that the board selectmen approve the request by Tavelino for eleven A M openings on the dates of Sunday New England Patriots home games that begin at one P M.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the appointment of an election worker. I move that the board selectmen approve the appointment of Marshall Walker as an election worker for the term September first, two thousand fourteen, to December first, two thousand fifteen, and thank her for her service.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Just before, just quickly, it seems like every, every year, we go back and amend or give special permission for people to open during a Sunday game. Is there a way we can give a blanket for the year two thousand fifteen? All the liquor licenses are allowed to open at eleven o'clock for one o'clock game? It seems like they're all asking for it and we go through this process.
Yeah, they all, they all want it, yeah.
Is there anyone that has? But if they don't want it, they don't, they're not obligated, but it's an option. It just seems like it would save a lot of work if everyone's asking every year.
Like make that as part of the license?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a legal question? Can we give a point?
Yeah, it's an A B C C question. I think we have to ask them.
Or do we have to go to each one individually?
I don't, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer. I, I've always seen it done, you know, individually, but it's, it's a fair question. I mean, it's, makes sense to me.
Well, if, if the A B C C says, says you can't make it as part of the license, could we attach a letter to each license giving them permission? You know, beforehand?
Did you see what happened tonight? We had one applicant coming in under emergency conditions.
And they, they were new, so they didn't understand the process as well, so.
And we've never said no.
Right.
So do a proactive letter attached to this, from the selectmen, attached to the license. Can we do that?
You can find out.
We'll check with the A B C C and see what we can do.
And just the last items in your packet, information items. Whatever isn't attached is in the selectmen's office if you want to see detail on the planning board information. And that's it? The other comments? Okay.
I just want to apologize to the board for that interruption. Before, that item was in the packet. It was my mistake.
No problem.
My apology.
No, you're not allowed to make mistakes, Frank.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
What's this in the packet that was handed out for the, is that part of the liquor license request?
That's the twenty-four J reports.
But is that attached to anything or just S Y I?
No, that's just information.
Information.
So I have things to sign. Motion to adjourn. Anybody going to second that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.